All right, good evening. Good evening, this is call to order for the regular board meeting of the Bridgeport Board of Education. Board members, we're starting the meeting. Today's September 8th and it's 6:33. Can we stand for the pledge? One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, conducive for all. Mr. Bennahan can take role call.
Avery Wan. Christine Baptiste Perez. Is Aquisha Catherine Mear.
Here.
Ms. Marista Estramera Jimenez. Mr. William Medina.
Present, sir, thank you.
Ms. Jennifer Perez. Mr. Joseph Sokolov. Mr. Robert Traver. And Mr. Andrea Watson.
First item on agenda is student rep report, but we don't have them yet, so we'll start with public comment. Jeff Morrissey.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. The timer didn't start while I was putting my reading glasses on, that is because it did not. These are new this year. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Jeff Morrissey and I'm the president of the Bridgeport Education Association, the BEA. I'm here before you this evening to call attention to an urgent matter. Since the beginning of the school year, I've been receiving numerous phone calls and emails pertaining to the difficulty of safely managing a kindergarten classroom due to the absence of paraprofessionals. We're aware that these individuals have been removed from kindergarten classes due to the budget cuts last spring. In hindsight, we all realize that no cuts to education lead to significant advancements, except on a monetary level, to balance the budget. But this cut in particular will have devastating repercussions. Having one individual manage a classroom of students who are just beginning a transition to a new environment, who may also have diverse needs, creates an atmosphere which is unsafe and clearly unsustainable. Children at this age need additional support in adhering to classroom procedures, transitioning between activities, going to and from different areas of the school building, lining up recess, restroom, opening breakfast and lunch food packaging, and many other tasks as they navigate through their day. Their first experience in school should not be one of confusion or instability. Our kindergarten teachers do a phenomenal job, but again, it is beyond unreasonable to expect one person to manage these aforementioned tasks without support, in addition to providing the best education possible to these eager young learners. In communicating with members who are teachers of kindergarten, their most significant concern is the safety of the children. The reinstatement of kindergarten paraprofessionals as district employees will allow teachers the flexibility they need to provide our kids with the best social and educational experience as they begin their journey with Bridgeport Public Schools. This is a matter on which I implore the board, the superintendent, and our supporters from the State Department of Education to take immediate action. Thank you.
Giovanna Ramos.
Good evening, Board of Education members, I'm Giovanna Ramos, the principal of Thomas Hooker School. Since our staff is smaller this year, more responsibilities are put on others. I stand before you tonight with colleagues, teachers, paras, and other employees to ask for your help. We really need kindergarten paras back in our classrooms. Kindergarten is new for many of our students, they need assistance with things like walking in a line, how to be in a huge space, such as the gym, art room, cafeteria, library, music room, and playground. These little five-year-olds and sometimes four-year-olds need help moving from one space to another, and they are little, so they move slowly. Some need more support than others. Once in that big space, they have to listen to the teacher and follow the rules and be expected to follow along with the lesson plan and produce work in one way or another. We expect a lot from these little ones. These little five-year-olds are expected to interact not only with their classroom teacher, but a handful of other adults as well, then go to a huge cafeteria to have lunch and outside for recess. Some cry, some need help in the bathroom, help tying shoes, assistance with tummy aches, summer in pull-ups, accidents and spills happen, and some do not know how to communicate fully yet. These are a lot to put on a five-year-old and a teacher for a full school day. A little help can go a long way. Our kindergarten teachers and specialists are hardworking, dedicated, responsible, and are doing everything they can to help our little ones be successful in kindergarten. However, minimal support like this can lead to burnout very quickly. This is also a safety issue, support is also needed at dismissal and arrival. Additionally, my K teachers will continue to receive new children as the year progresses, and they will have students who have an IEP transition into their classrooms from our self-contained classrooms. A lot is expected from our K teachers and specialists. I want Bridgeport to retain our amazing teachers. We are rooted in passion and driven by purpose, this is why we are here standing before you tonight. Please help us, thank you and respectfully.
Thank you. Marilyn London.
Hi, good evening, members of the Board of Education. To segue what Mrs. Ramos has said, I'd like to let you all know that I am a resource sped parrot at Thomas Hooker School. And I'm responsible solely for the academic support of approximately thirty students from pre-K through eighth grade. As a result of the recent staff cuts, I am now being asked to do some of the duties that the kindergarten paras used to perform. This includes changing diapers for those who are not potty trained, monitoring children in the lunchroom who are unable to follow simple instructions, and taking a pre-K student out of the classroom because the child will not nap and is disruptive. All of these children are also high elopement risks and must be very closely supervised at all time, much more than the average kindergarten student. These children are also very limited in their abilities to follow in simple instructions and to know the difference between what is safe and what is not. When I am asked to perform these duties, it is taking me away from all of the other IEP students in the general classrooms who are entitled to receive my support. This is not fair to them, to the parents, or to the teachers who depend on me to support them in the classroom. Safety is also being compromised in these classrooms, these children need to be closely watched and without another person in the room, it becomes a very difficult class while trying to educate the others. This turns into a snowball effect and affects the learning environment as the children who are trying to get educated by the teacher have to constantly wait while the teacher turns around and attends to these special needs children. Thank you.
Amy Broad.
Good evening, Dr. Avery and Board of Education members. My name is Amy Broad. I am the secretary of the BEA, but more importantly, I am a kindergarten teacher. This is my thirty-first year of teaching and my thirteenth year teaching kindergarten, and I truly love teaching this age level every year and for so many reasons. The tremendous growth that we see, the funny things that they say, their big hugs, all of it, I love teaching kindergarten, the rewards greatly outweigh the challenges. However, this year has begun like none other. The needs of these babies have grown tremendously, yet the resources have decreased. It's not only difficult to manage, it has become a safety issue. I have runners and wanderers in my class, and I don't have enough hands to hold them all. I find myself spending a large portion of the day redirecting students instead of being able to teach. We all have a number of four-year-olds in our classrooms that may not have been ready to begin kindergarten, but they were allowed to. So I am here to ask you to reinstate the kindergarten paraprofessionals. We kindergarten teachers cannot do this alone. We need help. In addition, we need more support staff and paraprofessionals to help with our most vulnerable population, of which we have many in our classrooms. At a time when our children need more, we're giving them less, yet we are demanding more of them. I am fortunate to have principals who have been supportive and trying to offer help whenever they can, like the Thomas Hooker said. However, there are simply not enough people in the building to help with the growing number of needy students. Please help us to maintain a safe and thriving kindergarten classroom.
Next item is approval of minutes from the regular meeting of August 25th, 2025. Goodbye, Mr. Bennahan, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Sokolovick. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, that carries. The next item is the chairperson's report. So do you want to start by just pulling my report up? Just take a moment, that last week, the State Board of Education met with the Commissioner of Education and the technical assistance team. After watching that meeting, it was clear to me that the staff of Bridgeport Public Schools is not getting the recognition they deserve. Our district has been through some difficult challenges with the budget, and it's important for the work that they're providing to be recognized by the state. We're doing it with very minimal staff, as was discussed earlier by our public comment. And, you know, we started the year with, the state took credit for starting the year with under forty vacancies, including the two in special ed. And I just want to say that's the work of a lot of staff members on, in our, on our staff, who have really been just doing tireless work throughout the summer and, and then those in the schools as well, who have stayed. And that those vacancies could have gone up, and we know that, especially with what is happening in kindergarten. And so we want just to, I always want to acknowledge the work that the staff is doing for Bridgeport, even if the state's not seeing that. And just because of the, because of the dedication of this staff, you know, we did start the year with fewer vacancies than we did in the years in the past. So I think that's a significant accomplishment and a testament to the work that all the staff are doing here. And I want to just express gratitude for Bridgeport Schools, public school staff, and just for sticking with us. I've met in the past two or three months more staff that have been here longer, I'm going to say longer than I've been alive, but close to it. I'm not that young, but, but for a while, right? And I just, and there's something about, to be said about that. And we, as a board, you know, we need to do better in advocacy efforts. And I would also want to acknowledge that the state and the city need to do better in terms of financing us and providing us with that resource. And I mentioned that at convocation, that, you know, they partnered to give us a convocation to bring back transportation, and that's the bare minimum. We need paraprofessionals in classrooms, we need librarians, assistant principals, we need what other districts have. And that's the bare minimum, what we need. So I just want to acknowledge that in my report today. Just another highlight of what we've done in the past two weeks. I just want to acknowledge that the staff at Vassick High School for that transition, we saw the school two days before and there was still some classrooms that weren't ready. And, and I know there's, there's still work in progress, but I did want to say that the school's open and I'm wishing the staff and the students a successful year there. It's a beautiful school, if anybody hasn't had a chance to see it, and we hope that we can continue putting more resources into buildings as well, so that all students have that type of access. As far as my report, I think that's going to conclude my report for the day. Is there any, any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Sokolovick.
Yes, since it's on the agenda and it actually fits the agenda, I won't be talking on a turn this time when I bring up the state intervention and the work our district has done. I think, I believe there's other issues that they've actually taken the lead on, like the, what you call it, the center, new center that goes downtown, that was in the works prior to the state intervention, the state intervention. A lot of things were here prior to the intervention, yes, the state is coming in, they're giving us a lot of advice, but one thing I haven't heard out of them is that we need more money. Today, we heard from the staff who are doing more with less yet again. Now, their words may very well reach the state commissioner, and they may very well give us some money to, some of that $5 million set aside to bring back the paras. But what we need to be cognizant of, the state, that will only be given into momentary pressure, and that's a one-time influx of funds. Again, unless we get sustainable funding from the state of Connecticut and the city of Bridgeport to manage our Bridgeport Public Schools to the level our students and staff deserve, we're going to be right back in the same boat next year. So we need to keep the pressure on, yes, by all means, call us to account for the cuts that we do make and the priorities we put on those cuts, that's, that's on us. But not having the money is definitely on the state, local, and federal officials that we all need to reach out for and fight to keep getting the money on a sustainable, increasing basis year over year. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Traver.
I, I, I don't disagree with what Mr. Sokolovick just said. And we are awaiting news on special session this fall, where we're waiting on to hear whether the governor and the legislature are going to discuss this money, this cash of money that they haven't decided where to spend. I, I tell people all the time, I'm reminded of Smog sitting on his mountain of gold, for those of you that read The Lord of the Rings. But there's that question. And anyone that lives anywhere can call their state rep and state senator and talk about what we heard tonight, because those are real stories that your state rep or state senator should hear. Then there's the question of the $5 million, and so I won't wax poetic about that, but we've been waiting to hear. And I sat down, notwithstanding who's taking credit for what, and it's been the source of irritation since the first report in February, where we felt that the State Department of Ed was taking credit for a lot of work that we had already started. The technical assistance team has been helpful in many ways. I won't go into parsing out who did what, who said what, but I know that I spoke with them a month and a half ago about how, even though they'd like us to spend that money on something that's not a renewing, you know, continuing expense, there are things that we should spend it on, that might need to be spent on again next year, like kindergarten paras. And that sometimes when you live in a poor city, you spend the money on something this year, and then you try and figure out next year how to spend, how to get that money next year. And that's what we do. And we're still waiting to find out what we're going to spend it on. And so I guess that's the question, this is a long way of saying, have we figured out how we're going to spend the money? Have we gotten any guidance on the $5 million, which was in the state budget?
Mr. Bennahan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for the staff to be here, and I agree with you a hundred percent, I'm with you guys, so I'm going to let you know. Just want to know something that I, and I'm maybe clear to speak to talk because I'm maybe glad, I don't work for the senior for the board education either, so I'm free to speak with a lot of professionals. But doing this, people from doing the convention 2025, but I know nothing is creating this life, why, whatever they spend on the money, whatever they do with that convention, why they don't give it to Bridgeport Public School, we can have paraprofessional. That's one of the first things I'm going to say, they care so much, why they don't give all that money, they spend it, because I know it's not going to be free, and this life, nothing is free. And I know they really spend money, so that money, why they don't give it to you, Dr. Avery, so we can have, we can have back our paraprofessional, that's why I want to say that. And other that I don't like, I didn't like, I'm very glad the state is watching, when the state, the board education hire for, they don't recognize, or at least say, Bridgeport's doing a good job. They don't do that, they don't see the cabinet, all these people here, they're doing amazing job, working 24/7, Saturday and Sunday, when they're supposed to be off with the family. The state, the board, they don't say, oh, Bridgeport's doing a good job, they don't recognize that. They don't say nothing about Bridgeport Public School, but when they want something, Bridgeport Public School and our cabin and the board members, we give it to them and we give extra, you know, so be sure they have everything. So it's a shame, and I told the state, oh, the board education, the hard for, that you please the next time, recognize when Bridgeport is doing a job. The staff are doing the job, I thank staff from Bridgeport Public School, you stay here with us because you care about Bridgeport Public School and you care about our students. You can go another, another town, and I respect that, that you stay because you care and you want the best for Bridgeport Public School, and I take that out of my hat for you, for you that. And I know we need paraprofessional back, and I remember when we started removing the homeschool coordinator. Homeschool coordinator worked so hard to be sure we got parents involved in Bridgeport Public School with the PAC and PTSO, go check what's going on with the student home, why the student is not coming, doing the homework, stressed, depressed, emotional, everything. But the state, they don't see that. People, the only thing they can say, oh, they're not doing the job, oh, they're not doing this, if they don't come and sit down with Dr. Avery, they don't come to sit down with all these people, Cameron, and you know, they don't do that. But they ask for it, and we give it to them. But it's a shame that the state or the hard for, they don't recognize the amazing job, Bridgeport Public School, they're doing, board members, Dr. Avery, and the cabinet. But they don't say it, but I say to you guys, thank you for everything you do, I'm very proud for each one of you, because I know and I see what did you do, and I challenge anyone, say that you guys not doing the job, or that theory, or one of the board members. But I'm with you, staff, we need our para back as soon as possible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll take Mr. Watson's questions about the chairperson's report, and then we'll move on. And I see Mr. Medina as well, Mr. Watson.
I have more of a comment, I think people make, that should have been making comments about your report, should have been doing that instead of bashing the state. You know, the people that they need to ask for money and to, and to give funds so we could, you know, do what we have to do for the future, they should, they should have been more focused on your report instead of worrying about bashing the state and brownie ports from, 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 from people. Thank you.
Mr. Medina will be the final, and then we'll move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll be brief. So I agree with everything that Mr. Traver, Mr. Joe, and Mr. Albert Bennahan, even in his point of personal privilege on his thing. I want to thank the staff that came out to give a report, thank you, Madam Chair, for adding to your report, all the things that we have done as a board and how we've been working together. We're still looking for that word to be true, and that word means collaboration. I look forward for them to be stepping up and us maybe even knocking on their door to sit down with them and speak with them, because if they're going to be here with us continuously, we want to, you know, have it more hands-on on the decisions that we need to be making, or the advice that they want to give us and everything. I know we're working on those recommendations from that audit, and again, you know, we, we don't need the limelight on us. They chose to put a limelight on us, so, you know, they need to look at everything that's being done. And like Mr. Bennahan, Corralis said, you know, our team, through Dr. Avery, they have been working so hard to make sure that we're looking towards the future ahead and making plans. And we're not all perfect, none of us are, but we make, we have made strides even before they were here, and we just want them to know that we're here to work, every single board member is here to try to work and all that stuff, and you can hear because of their passion and everything that's been said. I would never stop any board member from speaking their mind, but we, we're working on it. So we just want them to know that we're noticing our work also, even though they're not noticing, but we're going to do it whether they're here or not, because this is what we chose to do. And this is why you hear the passion about, hey, if you're going to be here, be here, but work with us, not against us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Let's move on to committee referrals. The finance committee will meet September 17th, 5:30, it'll be a virtual meeting. I do have some referrals from the last meeting that will go on the agenda, is there any other referrals since we met? September 17th, Wednesday next week, 5:30 virtual. Seeing none, we'll move on to Instruction Support Services Committee.
Instruction and Support Services met last week, essentially the idea was to have a quick meeting at the beginning of the year to summarize before the first day of school, so that we didn't take too much time from the staff. And we did that, I will say that I was delighted to hear in the reports, we had an excellent report from Ms. Carly about the PAC PTSO and what they're doing there, and just all set to go and good to go. And then the really delightful news was the, we had had a meeting in the spring with the high school teachers, ELA teachers, about curriculum development over the summer, where the teachers met and reviewed options and decided on an option where they would meet and develop, build on a new, on a curriculum being used in Central, and a couple of the others had done a little bit of that curriculum. And they were going to work to expand it for all the high schools, and they went way beyond that over the summer, way beyond the high schools. I remember specifically the question being asked about the middle schools, and they said perhaps in the next year, they went beyond the middle schools and into the elementary schools, beyond ELA. It was really an exciting report and exciting to hear. So it sort of reminded me of the old days when you go down to Aqua in the summer, and there'd be classroom after classroom of teachers writing curriculum. So I think that progress is being made on going back to including teachers and developing curriculum and working with teachers in a respectful way. So I was very excited to hear that report. And that's it, the next meeting will be at the fourth Wednesday of the month, I don't have the date off the top of my head.
Any referrals to Instruction Support Services Committee?
I guess my manager.
Go ahead.
I'd like to get a security, security report, what's going on with all the security from Bridgeport Public School, the training, especially the budget. So we'd like to get an update, and we have a long time, we don't get update about that.
So we're actually going to have an update today on that, on the agenda?
Yeah, but I would know that, that, Mr. Traver, more that it's very different, what you have in your agenda. And also, I would like to get information through the update of nutrition center about the budget and what's going on with cafeteria, some issues that are, students, parents coming about complaining about the food. It's now getting the way, the way it's supposed to be, so I just want to know what's going on there. Also, I know we spoke about this months back, but we never speak, and I'll bring it back. I know that one of the coaches passed away, and we said we're going to put his name, Bernie Lofton, so I want to know what happened with that, so we'd like to get.
So I wanna know what happened with that. Um, so we'd like to get an update with that.
That, that's on facilities, or is that for Instruction Support Services?
Facility?
I put that in facilities.
So that, that.
Sorry. No problem. Sound good with me? And, um, the other one was, I'll now speak with this with Dr. Avery about the new center. And we spoke, I mean, if I sit down to like to have the center have a, uh, dedicate to somebody dedicate more than thirty years for the parents here for Bridgeport Public School. And Ms. Margie Source, um, she passed away. She was one of the first person bringing the pack and BTS from Bridgeport Public School. That's, um, Jimmy Musore's mom. And she's a lady that she had the history here for so many years. With, uh, Marjorie Parker was here, Marjorie Caldenon was here. She was a very, very important person to take care of our students and parents. So I'll bring that for committee, Mr. Traver.
I, I didn't understand that one. Which center?
The new, uh, center we.
Welcoming Center? Would that not be facilities too?
Facility. No, no problem. Much better for me.
I'm, I'm just, you wanna name, you were talking about naming?
Sound good. Alright. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Any other referrals? Seeing none, um, uh, we'll go on to the Policy and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, I think Mr. Woodson had his hand up.
Mr. Woodson, do you have something for Instruction Support Services?
No, I'll put my hand down, sorry.
No problem. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we are actually meeting. There's nothing new to, uh, to share today. Um, we do have multiple things that we're gonna do. Our next meeting is, so we haven't met since the last meeting that we, I gave a report. Our next meeting actually is this Wednesday, uh, September tenth, twenty twenty-five. So I have multiple referrals already on hand. If anybody has any others, please, uh, you can share or send me any mirror texts.
Any referrals? Alright. The Facilities Committee, um, met last Wednesday. We discussed, um, updates on summer projects. I wanna acknowledge the, the facility staff, operation staff, um, Mr. Garcia and his team. He had a hundred and twenty staff members working throughout the summer. Um, that's understaffed. They should have about one hundred and eighty. Um, but due to cuts, that's what we have. Um, and the, some of the work they did included, um, the move from Bassek, uh, roof on Curial, um, a playground for High Horizons. Some repairs on Multicolcho because of a flooding. Repairs to trailers at Park City and Blackham. The pool at JFK. So there was a lot of work that they've done on top of the day-to-day cleaning and, and, and just the summer cleaning as well. So I just wanna acknowledge that, um, there's a lot of work done this summer and, um, it's still a work in progress, but, uh, we'll keep going. And then we had an update at that committee of, um, the Bridgeport Military Academy. Currently, um, we have two schools in one building at Bassek High School, um, Bridgeport Military Academy and Bassek. It's un, it's over capacity. So Bridgeport Military Academy is split right now. We're ninth through eleventh, they're in their, uh, former building. And twelfth graders are at the Bassek building. Are there ten classrooms at Bassek dedicated? Something to that effect, dedicated to BMA. So, um, that was poor planning, I guess, um, to say the least. Where some of the updates that we had were that, uh, we're looking to, uh, find an accommodation for them, uh, closer to Bassek. And, um, most likely, hopefully, we can get something at the, uh, University of Bridgeport building there. Uh, to accommodate all the students, uh, because as of now, they, they don't fit in that one building. Um, so, and I'll leave it at that because that's still a work in progress and we'll get more updates as we find, um, the, the facilities for them. Um, any referrals? The next meeting will be October first. And, uh, that'll be the first Wednesday of next month. Mr. Traver?
I wanna refer, um, I, 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 this might not be, I mean, I recognize that it may not be your next meeting, but I wanna put it on your agenda. Um, because I said last spring that it needs to be on the agenda this fall. That we begin the process of planning the, um, community involved, developing a community discussion on the East End School. Um, we did not have a successful, uh, community program this past spring. It was too hurried and did not, eh, get people to attend. It was a failure involved, you know, to get community involvement. And in so far as we want to see a good community discussion on whether or not the community supports developing, you know, building a new school on the Old Harding site, we need to start now to develop a plan for how we're gonna have a community discussion that reflects the will of the community. And we need to have that to justify going forward with the program. Um, and, um, so I want us to start now developing such a program. And it seems to me that's the Facilities Committee. Thank you.
Mr. Scolavick?
Yeah, along the same lines as Mr. Traver is, uh, mentioning about, about the new school. I think we really need to start looking at the Facilities Master Plan as a whole as well to get, get an update on the posi, on the positions, where application statuses are in the various product projects. The economic feasibility of Plan As and Plan Bs, because right now we're just looking at Plan A. I'm sure everybody wants a new school building. I particularly want a school building. I do not object to a new school building. But there may be more than one way to go about that that we need to explore and really have conversations about. And I think we should do that actually prior, come with some idea of what we're doing. Because if we're asking everybody, you want a new school, the answer is always yes, of course we want a new school. But do we want that new school to be at the expense of three neighborhood schools? Is it feasible, cost-effective to renovate as new some of these new schools? Is it allowable? I still never actually seen a report that actually prohibits renovating a new school, renovating an old school as new. Because once the neighborhood schools are gone, they're gone forever. So this is discussions we need to be having. On the, at least if, if there's other ideas, if those ideas are not feasible, let's put them to bed and add a thorough discussion and thorough debates at the committee level. Thank you.
Alright. Mr. Medina and then Ms. Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as I'm writing here, so I'll start from the bottom. Um, can we get an update on, uh, the, with the status of the potential, uh, or this potential spent, uh, the sped at, at school over at the old scheme? Update on that, what's happening, was that updating that? Also, um, an update status on the whole John Winterup slash scheme campus? Also, an update on information about overflow space? Because I know we're running into a situation because of the whole BMA situation. And then it's gonna be coming very closely and soon, you know, about the whole John Winterup and scheme that we need that overflow space. So that's why I asked for that. And then also I wanna bring to your attention once again to everybody, uh, to set up the walk of the old and the new Bassek with those alumni that have made numerous requests. So I would like that to be, uh, so that we can start planning ahead and making sure we get that organized. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Uh, just two quick things regarding facilities. Uh, I know that Mr. Garcia has started in a summer intern program. There were two programs. There was one that was a summer intern program. And then one, another one that was subsidized by the workplace for paid internships for the Facilities Department. Did that program carry out this past summer? Because I know that they worked on it the summer before. Just wanted to get an update on what's going on with that, because I know they worked hard. And I was there when we were planning to reach back out to the workplace and just kind of brainstorming about it. And, um, just a quick question, is first responder training offered at BMA?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so we'll move on to the K report. Um, I don't have any updates. I don't think, Mr. Scolavick, do you have? Okay.
For first of my memory, um, yeah, there's going to be a webinar on the seventeenth, understanding the changes to the state uh, education finances that just passed. That's gonna be on the seventeenth. And on September twenty-fourth, this is not really for board members, but K will be holding a, uh, webinar for incoming board members, whoever wants to be a board member, running for board members and what's involved. I know we got several new people running from, so if they could hear the sound of my voice, I did post it on my Facebook page, you could click the link, register. It's best to hit the ground running. Thank you.
K report, uh, moving on, we have, um, Superintendent's report, Dr. Avery.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and welcome everybody this evening. I wanted to kind of, you know, start out my presentation by thanking my teachers, administrators, students, parents, community. My district staff administrator, we had a very, I think, a very successful opening of school year this year. So I wanted to kind of, you know, throw that big congratulations out. It was a team effort, uh, to be able to kind of get, you know, the school year started differently than it started last year. So I'm very, very pleased with that. And, and I do hear you guys, we talk about the, the needs that were taken away, the needs that need to be brought back. Uh, I, I can say that not only did I provide a recommendation to the state, but the board also provided a recommendation to the state regarding the things that we felt we need to be able to utilize those dollars for. Uh, and so tho, those two presentations or, or documentations were presented to, uh, the technical assistance team. And they presented those, uh, those, those wish lists to the, to the commissioner. Uh, we have not heard back from them as to what we're gonna be allowed to use those dollars for. But overall, the overarching piece of that is that, um, the commissioner has the total say as to how those dollars are gonna be funded. But they did give us an opportunity to prevent, present what we felt we needed to be able to utilize those dollars for. So it's in their hands, and so we're still waiting on that, uh, response back from them. So I'm hoping to hear something pretty quickly on that, uh, because, uh, time is a ticking to be able to work, to work through that. Uh, in addition to that, I just kind of wanted to, to, uh, uh, I have my colleague here, Assistant Superintendent Margaret Hughes. That's gonna assist me in my presentation this evening. And really what we want, what I wanted to do today is to give a highlight of, of the twenty-four, twenty-five final SBA and SAT results for the district. And so, um, I'll have Marge do a couple of slides and then I will, uh, intervene, uh, with the, um, professional learning that took place from there. Go ahead, Marge.
Everyone should have received this in their board book this week to take a look at it. However, there, there's good news here. We've had increases in ELA and math from fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And our ELA results in, um, exceeded our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. And our math, uh, arrived at our twenty-eighteen, the pre-COVID results, which are really, um, it's a huge marker for us to be able to get that back to the pre-COVID. A quick note on science, although it wasn't included in here, science as well exceeded twenty-three, twenty-four school year and exceeded twenty-eighteen, uh, twenty-nineteen as well. This next slide shows a, um, ranking of schools with the highest to the lowest percentages of students achieving levels three and four or meeting or exceeding grade level standards for ELA. The next slide does the same for the math results by school. Our high schools, we had great news this year. One hundred percent of our high schools exceeded, uh, or one hundred percent of our high schools had growth in meeting, uh, grade level standards in the SAT. And eighty-six percent or six of seven high schools met the standards for math. In our growth, these tables, these charts will show you that again, our, although we didn't see the kind of growth that we were anticipating or that we would have hoped for, we did see growth. The ELA average percentage of target achieved to your right. This is the, this, this is the growth rate that is used in the Accountability Index, which is otherwise known as our report card. Although it isn't out yet, we do expect that to be in, uh, November. Uh, the ELA growth read al, also exceeded twenty-three, twenty-four. And the same thing with math, both growth rates and the average percentage of target achieved. When we look at the, the individual growth rates by school and we do a comparative analysis from twenty-eighteen. The schools in pink had declines from last year. The schools not highlighted had increases. This is for ELA, when you, when you disaggregate, disaggregate the results by school. Math, here are the math results.
I would like to kind of emphasize with, with all the things that happened in the district last year. And when you start looking at total growth that happened within our schools. It's remarkable that we've, we showed some increases in the growth in our academic standards across the board. Yes, there's, there, there's, there's tons and tons of room for improvement. And one of the things that we, we took a look at this summer is how do we do that? Uh, you know, Mr. Traver talked a little bit about curriculum development. And what are we, what are we doing to get teachers involved with, you know, creating the curriculum that they're gonna be utilizing in the classroom? Uh, and so I do wanna emphasize some of the professional learning opportunities that we took part in to try to make sure that we, we, we set up for success this school year. Uh, you know, the private, with private grant funding sessions for parents and personal learning, uh, for teachers after school. Really making sure that we can do those after-school extensions to be able to kind of, uh, do what's, what's needed in the classroom. The SIG schools and, uh, Commissioner Network schools, uh, will have HM, HMH teachers, uh, embedded coaching. That's really helping them to utilize that curriculum throughout the school year so that coaching opportunity is there. We're looking at student achievement incentives like, uh, the math meet. Uh, we had kids really, really excited about participating in that math meet. And so we wanna expand that a little bit to try to make sure we get more kids connected to the math, uh, opportunities. The ELA district-wide Hill for Literacy Professional Learning and Teacher-Embedded Coaching for, uh, the SO, SOR. Those are important to be able to kind of, because the teachers were asking about when we're gonna bring back the Hill for Literacy. Uh, you know, last year, uh, previous superintendent, you know, did away with the Hill for Literacy. But there was such a need and, and want for, uh, teachers across the district telling us, hey, can we have that training? It was really, really good for us, uh, so we brought it back in. Uh, Marge, you wanna take the next one for me?
The, uh, district grant, uh, the Right to Read Grant funded grade-three comprehension work, which we did in August. And that's gonna continue with teacher-embedded coaching specifically for grade three, paid through that grant. That'll continue this year or start this year. The, the SIG and the Commissioner Network schools are paying for additional Hilltime for the Science of Reading Skills and Wonders for Comprehension. So we really, when, when we took a look throughout the year, one of the things that jumped out at us is the need for our teachers to get more support in com, with comprehension. Uh, we're having a year-long reading competition for students, which we haven't announced yet, but that's very exciting. We also have, are doing, we have done and will continue to do professional learning across gen ed, special ed, and bilingual teachers. So this year, we tried to give everyone, because our big push for curriculum and instruction this year is differentiation. We turnkey to our principals, who then turnkeyed it at their buildings, ways for teachers to really get to know who their students are so that they can better able differentiate for them. And one of the things to that end, we had all of our teachers together to get the same curricular resource instruction. Finally, our district, okay.
And the, and the final thing that we're doing is really excited about the District Improvement Plan process. As, as principals work through their individual campuses and look and see how districts impact what they do. We have to look at that District Improvement Plan and Campus Improvement Plan process. So we have a new exciting opportunity for principals to engage their individual campuses by doing, uh, data teams and school improvement processes for their individual campuses. So, uh, every, every Friday, I'm meeting with all principals. Not all of them altogether, but small groups of principals every Friday, group of high school prin, uh, principals all together. We did that last Friday. This coming Friday, I'll have two sets of, of, uh, principals I'll be meeting with. And every Friday throughout the month. Friday throughout the month, we'll have these conversations about their data, understanding how, what they need to support, you know, them, them as a campus leader within their buildings. So that whole district and crew and, and school improvement process is gonna be a fluid process throughout the year. And I'm hoping that's gonna be a very integral part in seeing the success that we're gonna materialize with at the end of the school year. So that kind of summarizes that data piece, and I want to, you know, open it up for any questions.
Any questions about his report, Mrs. Kalovic?
Yes. Yeah, you mentioned, you mentioned growth. Growth is a very important indicator, it should be the true measure of how a district is doing, growing from where they've been. As we all know, this room, growth is a slow process, and it's the policy, between policy implementation and the effect is quite a while. So I'm sure what you're implementing now will give us gains in the future, but the gains we're seeing now are from the past. I don't wanna see other people taking credit for, not yes, I'm, I don't wanna see on a state report, since we've been there, there's been growth in math and reading in the city of Bridgeport. Growth has been started a while back. In fact, the Science of Reading, when the state implemented the, I think it was four or five curriculums that districts should use around the Science of Curriculum to support them, we did not have to change our curriculum, because we in Bridgeport were already using it. So we did not even have to pivot. So we were leading the way, and the, and the state took one of our curriculums and adopt, one of the curriculums or the books that we were supposed to use and adopted that as part of their choices to implement it forward, I believe.
Madam Chair? I, I want to kind of emphasize that. I think that's important, though, as well. So, but as you look at, you know, the stability of this, of the district, that is a critical, you know, important factor for schools and districts to improve. And so I think being able to kind of, you know, set that stage of being consistent and, and targeted about what we do, and that's what the district and school improvement plans will do for us as well. So I appreciate that. I think that's important to be able to, you know, to establish, but we just, we still have a long way to go. But I think, and you're right, that school improvement process takes three to five years to take hold and to make right. But with that, you have to have the consistency across the board as well, not only with the leadership at the top, but everybody in between as well. So that's, that's the beauty of what we're trying to do and establish. We gotta do our business different. And sometimes different is, is difficult. And sometimes when you look at, you know, the job of the superintendent and trying to balance everything, when it comes to finances, to people in the right seats on, on the bus to steer the bus, it's, it's, it's one of those delicate things. And I know I take it very serious that we gotta do what we gotta do. We have to stay focused and not let the distraction get us, because when it does, that's when things go astray. So we've been very, very strategic about how we do and how, how many steps we take forward before we have to readjust things. And so to me, that's important. And I think the board has given me the opportunity to do that. I know I've talked with the unions, you know, on a monthly basis, we're getting ready to start our, our routine of, you know, engaging both the teacher union and the administrative unions. So those are gonna be critical parts of how we do the business. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to that and to engaging, because like you said, we don't do everything right. We have to learn from our mistakes in the past, and I think that's important with what we do in the school improvement process.
I just wanted to add on, you, you had made a comment that the growth is, that, that growth that was measured and on the slide, that's the growth that our teachers did this past year. And I think we need to give the credit to the teachers for the work that they did this year.
Mr. Medina?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Avery, I know in our, in the report with the different subjects, there was a rank. One of the columns was, was rank, and that's ranking them within our, our district, correct, as far as where the schools lie within themselves, correct?
Yes, sir. There is. When you look at the slides, there's a couple of different ones. It ranks them based on level threes and fours in math and ELA.
Thank you very much. Now, we're gonna have a nice competition amongst them to get, get higher and all that. That's all for, 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 for me. I just wanted to make sure that that was correct, that way I can see. Thank you very much.
Who else? Ms. Casimir?
I'm over on the page where you have the ELA and math scores for just the high schools, and I just want to make sure that I understand what I'm reading. For instance, Harding, it says 3.6% or 3.60% in math. Does that mean that 3.6% of children that attend Harding, that's, that's passing, or can you explain that to me? I'm sorry.
What this means, this is the SATs that are administered to our grade 11 students only, okay? And that 3.6, that's interpreted as 3.6% of the grade 11 students at Harding met or exceeded the, the grade level standards.
Oh, okay. So this is the percentage of the kids that actually met or exceeded
Correct.
The SAT, the PSAT?
SAT, yeah.
For the 11th grade? Oh.
For 11th grade, yes. And that's, the problem is there's no growth model for high school. We're working on to develop one internally, but that's really what the state uses as a measurement.
Just one clarification. So I, I know that I'm an old parent, but 11th grade used to take a PSAT so they could get ready for the SAT. So both 11 and 12 are taking SAT?
11, just so, well, children can continue to take the SAT, but the only one that this measures is the state formal SAT, they call it the Saturday SAT, which is the formal measurement for grade 11 students. But you're right, grade nine, grade, our grade eight, nine, and 10 take the PSAT.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Esther Mara Jimenez. I had a question. Well, not so much a question, but I noticed during convocation, the rollout of the new website, and I noticed not everything was translated, excuse me, into our three languages, Spanish, Haitian Creole, and Portuguese. So I did want to bring that up to see if, you know, the website was just rolled out. I'm not sure if that's gonna happen in phases, but wanted to know if we can have consistent translation on our website and all the materials.
Yeah, I'll make sure that we can go back and, and check on that and see. Giancarlo and Tim, I'll have you guys kind of assist in. There was one, one language was not translated, so she's trying to make sure that there's clarity to, to make that happen.
So we are in the process of still developing the website. So if, we will probably just go back and connect later on or tomorrow at some point and see what, exactly what you're seeing, and then we can just go back and just make sure that everything's up to par.
And, and with the rollout, that, when, when they rolled it out during convocation, you know, it was one of those things where if anyone sees things that may be, you know, that needs to change, you can identify, you can go right directly to the Communications Department, you know, or you can direct, direct those emails to me, and I'll, I'll forward it to the right person. But yeah, there's gonna be a few things that just didn't, because we converted it over from the old one to the new one, and some of it didn't translate. I had some issues with some of the board stuff, too, that we have to kind of make correct as well, so.
Anything else for the superintendent's report? Ms. Casimir?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you, Dr. Avery, about the juvenile offenders over on Hosetonic Avenue. You know, when's the last time that you checked in with them, and what's going on?
You're talking about the juveniles, the juvenile, because we just started the school year, they're on my list, too. I do meet with the principal there, the assistant principal that's there. And so, but I've also had, this summer, I had a conversation with the state team that governs that, that unit, and we talked about, you know, making sure that we get an administrator there. So we, we were able to kind of, you know, work with the numbers and get that administrator back into play. So she is in the building, started out the school year with them, and so, but they're gonna be on my rotation as well, to see. They're, they're, I don't want them to be our forgotten individuals, right? So yes, I will keep them on the, at the forefront of my list as well.
So I was under the impression they had already had an administrator there, so there was no administrator the last school year?
Yeah, there was. She's back there. The same one that was there is there.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Got you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. But as, when we're talking about the assistant principal's move, and we start looking at the rankings, you know, of seniority, you know, that's why it ended up staying in the position. So yes, that was, that was part of this, that's why I said it was, it was discussed about, you know, eliminating the position, but we ended up keeping the position. So she's there.
All right. And I just have one other question, Dr. Avery, about, there's a couple of parents that had asked, they said, how do we find out, like, people who pass, illegally pass by the buses that get tickets from the city, how will we find out whether some, or if not all of that money can go toward the Bridgeport Public Schools budget? I know that the answer is most likely gonna be no, but I love to ask the question anyway. And I was just wondering, is that something that you ask? Is it something that a board member should volunteer to ask? Where do we ask? I just wanted to get information about that.
Good question. Part of that, part, the funding for the bus patrol, you know, the violations where, you know, community members will get tickets for passing the school bus, that's all done through the city. A portion of those funds go through the city, and the other portion of that, those funds goes to the bus company, the company with the, with the cameras on the, on the, the boardback gets no money from that, from those fees. Now, my understanding is that in the original conversation with the school district, the district was going to be allocated, you know, a couple of percentages of those dollars. But that conversation had, has not been held, had with me regarding that percentage. And so that may be something that we need to, as a district, reassess and re-approach the city about those dollars. So any help that board members can provide me, I'll be glad to make that conversation happen.
You know, just please let me know specifically what you need help with, and I'll, of course, make sure that I help in any way. Just wanted to ask about.
You know, what I think I might do is go through the Finance Committee and work through that committee, and then figure out what next steps we had. So Danielle, if you can add that to the agenda, I think we can have that conversation. I think there will be, the city will be willing to have that conversation with us, so.
All right. Move on to new business. The first item is, is for executive session, it's an approval of the proposed settlement involving a minor. If we go in executive session, we'll be with Christine Sullivan, attorney, Michelle McKinley, and Dr. Avery. Is there a motion?
Motion to go into executive session.
Motion was made.
Second.
A motion was made by Mrs. Kalovic and seconded by Mr. Benahan. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any intentions? We're going to second.
All right, we're back from executive session. It's eight twenty two. Is there a motion?
Go ahead.
I move to authorize the attorney to move forward as discussed in executive session.
Seconded by Mr. Benninghan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next item on agenda, executive session is an executive session update on school safety. And that would be with Assistant Chief Gregg, Superintendent Avery, and the board.
I move we can go into executive session with the superintendent and deputy chief.
The motion was made by Mr. Trevor, seconded by Mr. Benninghan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight twenty three, we're going back in.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back from executive session. It's 10:01. The next item on the agenda is second read, discussion of the following amended and recommended policies. Policy 3541.2, which is the transportation administrative guidelines for walking distances.
Dr. Sienna is going to take this item.
Thank you. So what was uploaded to the board book is just the changes that we had discussed in policy committee and that you discussed a couple of weeks ago. Really just a couple of simple changes. So in the first paragraph, you suggested adding the sentence that the board may determine the maximum walking distance subject to budgetary constraints. So anything that we're adding is in green and anything we're taking out is in red. And then you asked to take the paragraph out that define the walking distance. So that'll be removed. Hazard, the Director of Public Safety is now in the Bridgeport Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. So we can make that update. And then I apologize that the letters didn't all switch when we deleted that B. So I'll make sure that they go, you know, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I when the policy gets approved. But that's it. It was just a couple of those little changes. So I didn't know if you had any questions or...
Are there any questions?
Back to the chair. We just really wanted to make sure that we clarify that all we did is put from elementary walking distance up to and through the secondary up to so that we don't have to go back, come back to the board to change the policy if we have to revert back to the walking distance in the future. So it makes it easier and it clarifies the policy that was in existence. So and we just kind of redefined it a little bit to make it a little bit more clear for the community as well.
Seeing no questions, is there a motion? Seeing no questions, is there a motion? Anyone?
Motion. I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Sorry, the microphone was on, wasn't it?
Sorry.
But Ms. Schaefer made a motion.
Following amended recommended policies, P3541.2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Ms. Esther Marion Menace. Any further debate? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Is there any final business? That passes. Any final business that needs to be discussed? All right, so none. Is there a motion?
Point of...
You have something?
Personal point.
Go ahead.
Don't forget the vote.
For what?
Oh, well, in my neighborhood.
Oh. Go ahead.
I think he said it, which is why to make sure that it's tomorrow's primary. Oh, I'm sorry. Who were you speaking to?
Mr. Benahan. We're gonna keep... Committee to board stuff, guys. Mr. Benahan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things I want to speak, and I know you can bring this to one of the committee. And I know we talk about it, is the plaque, the new plaque they put in the New Bassin High School. They never put the board education's names. So this is the first time we saw many years in the district, and I know a lot of people being in the district. And I check all the Bishop Public School. We got, they have all the names of the board members. This is the first time that I see, thank one of my colleagues, they told me, Mr. Benahan, why this, the name was not there? And after that, you know, we speak about this, you know, I send it an email. I'm a part of the building committee. They never answered to me. So, okay, they never answered to me. That's why I bring it to the board to see, you know, that every you can figure out what's going on, why they cannot, why the reason we make the decision, they never, we never vote for that. Me and Ms. Schaefer, you know, we're part of the building committee. We need to talk about this. So they never make decision to, you know, to not add the board members' names. Because if you visit all the schools, we have the board members' name, and the building committee is there. And I'm talking before, you can go back 50, 60, 70 years back, and the board members' name is there. The second thing I want to let you know, Dr. Avery, that I went today to the Discovery School to, because a parent called me to some concern. So one of the concern is this, you see this golf ball? This is part, you know, from front of Discovery School, they have a park, the golf one. This goes directly to the school. This little ball you can hurt, it's not plastic. Maybe you hurt kids, break windows, hurt teachers, and whoever come, you know, because they're playing. So the city know that. The city says it costs a lot of money to put a net, something like that. That's what excuse. But I don't care about that because I care about my parents' student and, you know, whoever gonna get hurt. Because if somebody get hurt, they're gonna go after us. So they say it costs more $100,000 to put a net, whatever. So I... Yeah, but they can sue us more of that. They can sue us more of that. It's on student or teacher or, you know, especially the, break the windows. You know, this little ball that I, you can hear the noise. It's not plastic, and it's a collection. So the parent called me to talk about this, and I worry about this. So, you know, we can talk about later, you know, about committee. We can talk about the situation. And also, I busy, because I was there with a parent, I went to the Discovery School. You know, you can see I got the shirt. Mr. Ramos give it to me. Amazing. Again, so you, Dr. Ramos and the staff invited me very, very good. We gave a little tour. The school looks so quiet. I said, where's the students? Where is the staff? They were always in the classroom. They're amazing. But I want you to know that one of the parent talked to me. They need an art teacher there. They, one of the teacher, parents, they call me about this. They explain me a lot. They need an art teacher. They have some situation there. So you can start, I'll talk with Mr. Ramos. So I want to do that, and bring that to the private point. But the most important is the plaque. Everything is important. I just want to know what's going on. Who made that decision? Because I know me and Ms. Schaefer, we never did it.
That wasn't a board matter at the time. It was a school building committee, city side. So, I mean, at this point would be... If we want to take up that matter, we can focus our attention on that, or we could ask the city if they want to do something about it. But, I mean, there's, I can, I can, I can do something in the meeting on that, but I also want to make sure we're sticking up board business. But go ahead.
I think also, Ms. Anthony Piletto actually responded to that email. I'm not for sure if he responded to entire board, but I think, because you had put an email out to the committee.
What was the building committee, yeah?
He gave an extensive conversation about previous plaques and buildings, because I didn't have the historical knowledge. And he did respond. So again, that's something, you know, I can work through the chair to see if we could, you know, maybe have someone from the city to bring up and explain that a little bit. I mean, I'm fine in reaching out and seeing what I can do with that.
It's fine, but that every, like you say, previous, I don't know, previous plaque where? This is the first time I see a plaque with no board members' name. And you know, in that email, the building committee, I sent the pictures from all different school, they got board members. So my point is who made that decision? Who made that vote? Because we never talk about that building, in the building committee. So I feel if, you know, it's not respectful, you don't let us know.
I think the email said that the state, that the committee made a decision. It's just whether now we like it or not. It's, we can take that matter up if we want to, but, I mean, there's a lot of business we have to talk about.
I really answered his email, and he never respond me back in the past few days. That's why I bring it to the board to see what's going on. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, his response was inaccurate. That's the...
It's inaccurate, but also like, we can keep going back and forth on it, or do board business.
It is board business.
I mean...
I agree.
We, you know, we could, we could take up the matter in committees and go, you know, there's a lot of stuff we have to talk about too. Any further points to make up? I'll bring it to the facilities committee, and then we could talk about there.
I just had a clarifying item on something Mr. Benahan Grajalo said. That net would cover a very extensive part of the golf course. And I actually have a picture of all the golf course that the principal took off of Discovery. And he's got golf balls, yeah, sorry, about half a bucket, a Home Depot bucket, full of golf balls from that building. I also have a slide deck of cars, actually, faculty. Her windshield got cracked twice, and she had to incur damages because of golf clubs. I saw a video over the summer when he showed it to me of students playing in the front of the school and a golf ball passing right by the students. So it is a problem. The city did commit to paying for this half a million dollar net. The problem is that nothing's been done since the principal, Principal Ramos met with them over the summer. That's the problem. There's been no movement. It's nice weather out, perfect for golf, and before winter comes. And there's a major concern that a child is gonna get struck. So just kind of wanted to make that clarifying point.
You got that?
Yeah. I'll bring, I'll bring that back to, you know, the safety concern. It's a huge piece that we're gonna have to kind of at least have a, you know, a plan for. And so I don't know how, what that's gonna entail, but getting, getting with the principal and try to work with Mr. Ramos on what we can do. We gotta bring it to the attentions in a formal way, and I'll help orchestrate that as well.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ms. Passamere, second by Mr. Traver. All in favor? Moved, and it's 10:12 for adjourning. Have a great night.
God bless you guys. Take care. Thank you, Dr. Avery.